Let me first recognise that I had table Honorable Robert Tong, Minister for Tourism and Urban Renewal, Honorable Ivor Stevenson, Parsec in the Ministry of Health, our former Palrep, Mr Granu, the Development Officer in the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs, Mr Cozier Frederick, the Media, Kyri FM and DBS and GIS, and of course the people of the Salibia constituency. Good evening. Good evening. Okay. Over the past few days, we have been having a series of meetings to inform our constituents and the country of the development and programmes that we have been implementing for the well-being of our people. And many of us, we are aware also of all the negative things that has been said by elements of the opposition in the effort to try to bring down our country and the development of our people by extension. And we have an obligation to let our people know what is happening. But I will focus mainly on the Salibia constituency and what we have been doing over the past years, past two years, to ensure that the livelihood of our people is significantly improved. In our last town hall meeting in Badaka, we spoke about agriculture. And I made mention of the different programmes and assistance that we have given to our farmers within the Salibia constituency, and the formation of groups to ensure that our farmers can take the advantages that exist within the Ministry of Agriculture and what I'm able to do under the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs. And like I said last time, we had given 450 bags of fertiliser to the farmers of the Salibia constituency. And of course, I encouraged the formation of groups, which of course Mr Elvis Francis is spearheading for me from the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs, he is our agricultural liaison officer. And soon, we will be having our farmers' group established in the Salibia constituency. Now, because of the large span of the Salibia constituency, from Sineku to Tuna Village and around to Atkinson, we realised that there's a need for more manpower on the ground to help our farmers. And so, we have additional individuals attached to the Ministry of Health in the Castle Bruce district to ensure that the needs of our farmers are met. Also, I made mention last time that the Ministry of Agriculture will facilitate us in having 480 bags of fertiliser. And I can assure the farmers of the Salibia constituency, by next week, the fertiliser will be delivered because it was cleared today on the port. So, farmers, we're expecting you to do a little contribution when this fertiliser will be available. And we must thank the government of Morocco for facilitating us to have fertiliser. And of course, the Minister of Agriculture will be joining us in a while. Not as a speaker, but there are a lot in terms of agriculture happening on island. And the people of the Salibia constituency must take advantage of those facilities. The 10 million at the aid bank, for example, I was told that some farmers they are unable to access. But I have a different news coming from the bank, that indeed some farmers are accessing. And we'll do our best to ensure that we facilitate the rest of the farmers, who may have some difficulties in accessing those funds. And this is all in an effort to ensure that our people get into farming. And like the Minister of Agriculture is always saying, that we need to take farming serious because these days farming is a business. And if we are going to do business, we must be serious about it. There are a lot of opportunities existing, for example, in the northern side of the island, where we have the development of hotels. And with the development of hotels, there will be a demand for agricultural produce. And there are many shopterm crops in terms of agriculture that we can do in the Kalinago territory to ensure that we gain the agricultural dollars that we are in need of. I mean, when I speak of shopterm crops, I'm speaking of vegetables. Lettuce, for example, is one of those vegetables that is very costly now. I understand a friend of mine from the Atkinson community, whom we help with some seeds, he's actually selling one head of lettuce for five dollars. So if you have a thousand lettuce heads, then that would be good business for us. So those of us in the water catchment, in the water area, for example, in the tuna community, I want to assure you that we will continue to boost vegetable production, especially in the tuna community because of the abundance of water. And of course, when on business, we are all aware of the small business facility that we promised in our 2014 manifesto, to help the indigenous people and the Salibia constituency by extension to take entrepreneurship to the next level. So far, we have received numerous applications. And when calculated, we have over 0.8 million dollars in terms of individuals who applied, which of course, we are aware that we only have 500,000 in that facility to help the people of the Salibia constituency. The disbursement will be made later than Friday next week. So all the individuals who apply, you may not be able to get in the first phase. But the Minister of Finance has assured me that whatever is needed to ensure that business thrives in the Kalinago territory and Atkinson, he will ensure that the funds are made available for our people to develop themselves and become sustainable. And I'm hoping also that more individuals can continue to apply so that we can have a legitimate reason to ask for more funds. But one thing I want to caution is that when we receive those funds, whether it is for craft production, whether it is just to restock our shop, or whether it is to open a meat shop, or whatever we are planning to do, please ensure that we put the money for what we said it will be used for. Because at the end of the day, we want it to become a successful programme so that we can continue to empower our people and create employment within the constituency. We continue to engage our people also in small business development. In the Sineku area, we have the establishment of the Rural based Enterprise project, which was a pilot project, which started under the Ministry of Commerce and Small Business. We had training in terms of sewing, tourism, craft making and catering. But as we said, it is an incubator. And people need to move from being in incubator to start their business on their own. So I'm encouraging those individuals who participated in the programme at the Sineku Rural Business Enterprise to get the forms from the ministry, or you could contact me, I could get the form for you and ensure that it is filled out, so that we can take opportunity of the small business fund that is available. Also, we spoke about the Salibia Furniture Enterprise, which we started sometime last year with funding from the Ministry of Constituency Empowerment in the sum of $90,000 to provide trading to 15 young men within the constituency. Of course, we had given them a stipend during the trading. And I'm happy to say that Mr Alexis Prince was the facilitator of that programme, of this trading programme, which ran very well. Right now, at the Salibia Old School, we have some heavy equipment furniture, some heavy equipment for making furniture. However, we need a little bit of financing, which we will get soon, to ensure that we could start producing furniture at Salibia. So it's an ongoing programme and also we'll keep on training people within the constituency to ensure that we have a vibrant economic community on island. We have heard also of the alternative energy that we are pursuing vigorously to ensure that the Salibia constituency becomes the first green community on island. And for those of us who are coming just across here, you'd realise there's a little switch in the school. It is for the solar power energy that we will be passing on to the resource centre. And of course, with the solar project, which was funded by Five Seas, we have seven public buildings that will benefit in the coming few days. We have the Maho River Health Centre, the Sensi Resource Centre, the Kalinago Council, the Sineku Enterprise, the Kalinago Barana Ote and the Computer Centre, which is in point. So when you pass, you see the solar panels on these structures there from the project that I've just spoken of. Also, in addition, there are 15 remote dwelling homes that were fitted with independent units. And I'm very happy to say that most of, or all of these individuals, they are very far from the grid. And if they had to pay for electricity, it would cost them no less than $20,000. And I see maybe one or two of the recipients here, who are very happy with this solar project. Because they actually, they don't have to pay for any electricity, I believe, for the next 20 years or so. We come to housing. Prior to the Dominican Labour Party, we have always had a housing issue in the Kalinago territory in terms of housing. Because our housing structures, when our grandparents, when they constructed those homes, they have aged for a certain, for this span of time. And so, with the Labour Party coming into power, we were able to secure homes for our people in the Salibia constituency. And thanks to the Venezuelan government and the Chinese government for helping us in our time of need. And we must say thank you in a big way to these governments and to the and to the government of Dominica for building friendly relationship. Because many times, we forget that these are the people who help us in time of need. And there are certain elements in our society, or people in our society, who are trying to say that we should not have relationship with these friendly countries. Also, I've spoken with regards to the housing from the Koreans. I'm happy to say that now we are moving very fast in developing the structures. And at least by the end of this month, we will have three structures completed for the single occupants in our constituency. Yesterday, I visited one of the structures and I can say it is about 80% complete. So by today and tomorrow, I believe the home will be complete. And what we remain to do is just some painting and the fittings inside. And these are our senior citizens. And sometimes you hear people, they criticise us, they say that we are making people greedy. But it is our responsibility for us to care for our senior citizens because they have contributed towards the development of our community. And each of the structures that I've just spoken of is valued at $46,000. And we have 36 of them to construct. So most of our senior citizens will get one of those structures so that they can live a comfortable life, a comfortable twilight of the days. And of course, the Minister, Honorable Ivor, who is here, will speak a little bit to health. So I will just leave this on his part for him to discuss with us, share some information with us. But I must say that within the Ministry of Health, they are doing all they can to ensure that our health system is much more improved in the different health districts. Because we are fully aware that half of the Kalinago community goes to Castle Bruce and the remaining half goes to Marigot. So we can well understand what happens to an elderly individual who will travel way down to Marigot to receive health services. But when you get to Marigot, already the health facility is filled and our people cannot be serviced and must come back home. So we are doing all that we can to ensure that we improve the health, at least to accommodate more of the people. And again, we have heard the news from the Mexican government that we have received $5 million for the development of the new Marigot Hospital. And this, I believe, is going to benefit the Kalinago community very much. In terms of road construction, many of us, we are aware that prior to me coming, we used to pass around the schoolyard here. And we have done this piece of road at the front of the resource centre that we just came in in the tune of $46,000. We have completed from the ministry, we have completed the Sensi bypass, the Simsim Road, which cost us $80,000 to do the concrete works. And now the road is completed to reach to the Simsim Antenna. And also, we spent $60,000 to bring portable water to the people of Simsim. The Salibia Church Road, we did at $15,000. And the Lagley Road, we spent some $60,000 on the Lagley Road. Recently, we have spent $190,000 on the Horseback Ridge Road. And we have quite a bit of work to do. And we'll be spending $389,000 by next week also to ensure that the Horseback Ridge Road is completed and we can welcome the tourist bosses to travel to our scenic community of Badaka. And of course, they are the beautiful scenery that they love to see. Of course, we have the Maho River Road, which was completed in the sum of $40,557. And the Taffia Road, which is close to Miss Gail in Badaka, to go back to Mr Lynch, in the sum of $56,000. And the Margaret Gutter Road of $34,995. So within the past two years, we have spent $458,543.79. Yesterday, I was informed that the check should be ready by tomorrow, or at least by Monday. So once the check is ready by Monday, we are going to see the commencement of work continuing on the Horseback Ridge Road, on the Unchiselled Road, which is from the bus stop to go up to the hill to where Mr Paul Baron lives. And we will be spending $123,500 on the Unchiselled Road. In the Upper Hilton Road, which is from commonly known as Teacher Boot, to go back to the Horseback Ridge Road, will be spending $137,500. And the continuation of the Lagley Road will be spending $147,000,[1063.59][1063.59]$147,700 on the Lagley Road. And of course, in the Housing Scheme Road in Sineku, will be spending $41,600. So within the next week or so, we'll be spending $886,700 in the Salibia constituency. And it is in hope that by the end of this year, all our community roads will be in perfect condition. And just today, I submitted to the Minister of Agriculture the list of our feeder roads for better farm access. So the Betwuz Road in Golet River will be taken care of this year. So we are going to do the Betwuz Road from the Housing Scheme to reach where Mr Ivaris Lucian lands, or close to the Duasko Tank. And of course, it's quite a bit of finances to be spending at this time when all other countries, they are suffering economically. And this money is coming from the Citizen by Investment Fund. So while some people are trying to bring down our programme, we as a community and as a constituency collectively, we must condemn the actions of those who are trying to destroy our programme. We are also of the developments that is happening in Sineku. During the week where I'm driving to work, I felt very happy to see so many young individuals with their bags on their back, their tools in their hands and they are heading to work for eight o'clock. And this is because the government of Dominica is spending $539,000 on washroom development in the Sineku community alone. So everyone in Sineku, we started last, this month, so within three months' time, everybody in Sineku will have a washroom facility. And those with little structures or structures that may not be able to support those washrooms, the government will ensure that we take care of them in a timely manner. So the people of Sineku, if anyone in Sineku, any young man in Sineku is not working now, according to them themselves, is because they don't want to work. And within between last month and this coming month, if anyone in the Salibia constituency is not working, they are not willing to work. And of course, we know in the Salibia constituency, I always refer to the Salibia constituency as the maker of cricket. And I see many of us here who played cricket in the past. And we are all aware of the state of how Jolly Johns used to be. And so, we have facilitated $30,000 for the development of washrooms at the Jolly John playing field. As of recently, the ministry paid $5,000 for the upgrading of Jolly Johns before the solar lighting. And for most of us who haven't been to Jolly Johns recently, at this time of night, we should take a little lime to Jolly Johns to see how beautiful it is with the solar lights that we placed there recently. And this cost us $104,665 to ensure that we had the lighting at Jolly Johns. And I'm very happy that the Salibia constituency was one of those first constituency to receive solar lighting. And of course, there are other, a lot of things that we are doing in the constituency. We have the NEP programme. And for my visiting friends, who would be travelling maybe from the Wesley End, you'd have realised how beautiful it is to be travelling through the territory because of the level of satisfaction that we have in our NEP people in terms of the beautification. So you will see flowers planted around. And I'm hoping that when there's the competition for the most beautiful community, that the Salibia community will give some other constituencies some competition. And we have quite a bit of people employed under the NEP. For example, under Yes Week here, we have 16 individuals employed under the mentorship, giving the various schools additional support to ensure that they provide the assistance to the students. We have 22. On the beautification, we have 45. And on the security, we have seven. And at the Kalinago Barana Ote, we have three individuals. So in total, we have 93 persons employed under the National Employment Programme. And we have six supervisors, which add up to 99. So we're missing one to make 100. And they are doing a wonderful job. I must thank all of them for working hard to ensure that we make the community a better place for everyone. Most importantly, I want to say a special thanks to those who are under the Yes Week programme. Because those individuals under the Yes Week programme, or mostly our senior citizens, it's a blessing to them. And if it wasn't for the Dominican Labour Party, I'm not sure what would become of them. Many of them would have maybe have passed on by now. And I was kind of taken aback when I heard an announcement, or not an announcement, but when the PM said it originally started in the Kalinago territory because of when he visited someone in Laplin and then it was piloted here. And we speak of those who are under the National Employment Programme, while the opposition is criticising us, they call it never-ending poverty. But we must say that it is alleviating poverty in the community. So while they're saying it's not ending, we need to send a message to them that if they come to the Salibia constituency, for one example, that they will see the beautiful work that our people are doing on the ground. And we are spending a lot of money. So in one month, we are spending $58,509.10 in the Salibia constituency. And this is money which remains in the local economy. And for one year, it doubles quite a bit, well not double, if you multiply it by 12 months, I wanted to say, we'll get $702,109.20. Now, this does not include all the graduates that we have engaged in different offices. And we have many of them engaged, for example, one at the Kalinago Affairs, some at the library and some at the various institutions on island. In our last meeting, also I spoke about assisting our college student. I want to let our college student know that they will receive the money by the next week. Because we realise there is always a challenge for our students. And because of the distance that they have to travel to Tongue, sometimes our bus drivers don't do justice to them. They charge them a little bit more than is expected. But let me assure our college students that they will receive their transportation allowance. And as soon as we get it from the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs, we will write a letter to all college students to inform them to collect their transportation contributions. The Ministry of Finance, or the Minister, has approved for the Salibia constituency for housing assistance the sum of $368,695.98. Now, this will go a long way in helping us, especially again, our people who are the most vulnerable to ensure that we do some repairs of, or we say refurbishing their homes so that they can have a more comfortable place to rest. And this would, this would, this would include payments for labour. So the idea of assisting our people, we need to take a different approach. It's a little bit sad to say, but some people in the past, we helped, we assisted, but because of their financial contribution, they were not able to do the work themselves. And so, for example, the cement got hard, it still stayed there and stuff so. So what we have decided to do is, if we are assisting, we provide the labour to ensure that the materials is used on time. So if we're going to do repairs on any structure, we will ensure that labour is provided so that we have something that is completed. And let me just also reiterate that in Atkinson, we had some issues with drainage problem by Laron area. And this too has been taken care of. We will see work commencing soon on the drainage. And of course, we will be spending $5,482.48 to bring electricity to the Sineku playing field. Also, let me just inform with all that I've said, that the Ministry or the Minister of Finance will be visiting us on Wednesday. So on Wednesday, those who are interested or those who would love to see the Minister, he will be available on Wednesday so that we could visit him in the Sineku, at the Sineku Resource Centre. Transportation will be available for those who would love to see him. And I'm very happy tonight to inform us that in the Salibia constituency, the Minister of Finance has approved 30 new houses for our people in the Salibia constituency. So soon, we will see work commencing on our 30 structures. And there will be a special target group, or those, or single parents, for example, would be considered. And I see some of my people here who are in need of a structure. So rest assured that you will be taken care of. And not only these 30 new homes, but more will be done as we progress. And of course, people, we need to be appreciative of what is happening. Because many times, we stay too quiet. And when we receive, when the government assists us and we meet other people, we say nothing. When we hear people criticise, instead of defending what we have received, we're helping criticise them. But we must be thankful for those who are helping us. Because in many, in many other countries, the government, they are not doing this for their people. I believe, I'm subject to correction, but it I believe, I'm subject to correction, but it is only in Dominica, and it would only take the Dominica Labour Party to do that for its people. Also, also, I remember a couple, couple months ago, we had some, some, some postings on Facebook, and we have to be, we have to be mindful of what is happening on Facebook. And people, they were criticizing the representative for the Salibia constituency for not contributing to Kalinago Week. In the first sitting of Parliament, we went to Parliament as a government, and we changed the name from Carib to Kalinago, and that I believe must be applauded by the, by the, by the community. And for me, not to contribute towards Kalinago Week, it would be an embarrassment for me. But nobody, or those who are supposed to know better, went on criticizing, but I can say that the Ministry of Kalinago Affairs did contribute twenty thousand dollars towards Kalinago Week. And of course, we also contributed fifteen thousand dollars towards the Seminole Festival in Atkinson. And those things we need to know, because sometimes we hear things out there, and we are not able to defend what we are hearing. Our government, the Dominica Labour Party, remains focused on the development of Dominica, and most significantly, the development of the indigenous peoples. While some people may have alternative views, it is the first government that have assisted the Kalinago people to that extent. And many other communities, I remembered when, 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 if I'm not mistaken, I remember when Mr. Grunell, Mr. Kelly Grunell was our minister, during that year, I believe we had at least thirty-five of our students going to Venezuela to have a university, um, education. That was the first time. And from then, we have always had our Kalinago people go into other countries to have a university education. Those who did not receive scholarships, I can tell you that we have assisted them significantly in helping their tuition fees, or whatever fees we have to pay for them. And even here locally, we have been paying for school transportation. I remember when I went to, when I went to the Adventist School, this night I can never forget, they had, I had to almost walk from Calibish to the Territory. And I had to wake up at four o'clock in the morning to get prepared for five o'clock, because I had to take buses to go to Portsmoke. But now, we have buses taking our students from the doorstep to the school compound, from the school compound back home. And in addition to that, we give books, we give transfer grants. So really and truly, it is now up to our students to perform, and recently tablet. So now, we have everything at our fingertips, and if we don't want to make use of it, Mr. Tong, the Minister of Tourism cannot push it in our head, the Prime Minister, and the other ministers, all of, all of us as ministers, all we have to do is create the avenue or the means where you can take opportunities and ensure that you, that we better our lives. So without staying any longer, because I have two, I have two ministers here, it was a little distance to travel, I'm going to say thank you very much for listening, and we will entertain as many questions as possible, once you have questions to ask. Okay, so thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, just to inform you that, just within the Ministry of Health and Environment, I hold a specific responsibility for the Parliamentary Secretary with that responsibility for the environment. And this evening, I want to just inform you that I would prefer to focus attention on my deliberation, particularly in relation to matters of health, because the Honorable Cassius did not give me enough time to do what I would have to do to be here this evening. I wanted to give him support, but then Mr. Stevenson, you have to speak. So I say, my partner, I will give you support as long as you're here to represent your people. So here I am, my dear people of the Kalinago Territory. I want to say that I am pleased to be along with a team of PAL reps who continues to look towards the development of the people of this country. We in the Labour Party government, we are a strong team of persons, of PAL reps, who have, uh, devotion towards the development of this country. And while each PAL rep has his own responsibility, and particularly, each minister has his own responsibility, within the Ministry of Health and Environment, where I work together with the Honorable Kenneth Darrow, who is the Minister for Health, I want to inform you that we do a lot of things in this Ministry of Health and Environment. For those of us who listens to our radio, will have been hearing many of the developments that have been taking place with respect to the development of the health services, and furthermore, the development of our people. And I will only share just a few things with you this evening, since I do not already want to report on all the details, and I don't think time will permit it, because the Minister has only given me just fifteen minutes to report to you. But for most of us here, we have been hearing about health for some time right now. I, and, and health, in terms of a concept, before was like, um, if you've not been well, right? But then, what we have been seeing over the past years with respect to the development of health, is various stages of development in all aspects of health, which gives us a better understanding as to what health really is all about. And in my early days, when I worked in health, we refer to health as not just the absence of disease, but our complete well-being, or physical well-being, or complete emotional well-being, social well-being, and all those things that will make you healthy. These were the things that we, we looked at as health. And today, what I'm now seeing as a PAL rep, is that as this country continues to develop, we are seeing all the various sectors within the government, in health, in agriculture, in sports, in tourism, all those things that can impact positively on one's well-being. We see those things creating a level of development that will in itself create that health and well-being for people of this country. And one of the more important things I would like to just briefly make, make mention of in terms of our health services, is the construction of our new national hospital. Over the past years, I can tell you, much effort has been placed towards the construction of our new national hospital, that is, the Princess Margaret, Margaret Hospital. And you should know, my dear people, that in this country, the health services provide various categories of care. We provide primary care services, and we provide secondary and tertiary care services. And within the secondary, tertiary care services, what we are now seeing now as a government, is the construction of this new hospital. And this new hospital, I can tell you, my dear people, will bring much relief to you, the people of the Kalinago Territory. I am saying so because for many of us who have received care at the primary care levels at the various health centers, be it the type-one health centers, or the type-three health centers, and you have been referred to the hospital, and then when you're being told that you have to get a mammogram, or certain basic test, then the first thing that comes to your mind is about money. And more importantly, if you're being told that these tests are not available in Dominica, you have to go to Guadalupe, or you have to go to Martinique, or Guad, or even Barbados, then that is where the problem becomes. So we will be seeing during the completion of this new facility, the provision of services at this type of medical facility that will make life better for you, the people of Salibia, the people of Atkinson, the people of the Kalinago Territory, and most of all, the people of Dominica. And I can tell you that much work is being done presently at this new facility. The facility is now at a stage where two blocks are being built at the same time, and it is aimed at that by August of this year, these two new buildings will be commissioned to be fully equipped and staffed, to ensure that we can begin to, to provide the necessary services at this facility. And the, the progress of work will continue to ensure that by two thousand and eighteen, that all the various services that are to be provided at the new national hospital will be so done that every stage of completion will ensure a continued level of service that will be uninterrupted, and it'll ensure that our people of this country, or people of this Kalinago Karri Territory, will continue to get that service. My dear people, I can tell you that, for those of you who have been in Goodall recently, at the PMH, you will see more work being undertaken, and I'm happy that the Ministry of Health is sparing this huge facility, which is over forty million dollars, and I can tell you that is in itself a very significant contribution, and these monies have been made available by the Chinese government. While work progresses, my dear people, at the new national hospital, I spoke earlier on the levels of care in terms of our primary care services. We will see the continued improvement of our primary care services to include our health centers. For example, we, we intend to begin works on some major health centers, to convert them into what is called smart health centers. For example, in Laplin, within my neighboring constituency, in Grand Bay, and even which Marigot, which I will soon elaborate on, we expect to see these facilities being converted into smart health centers. And what that means is that we are going to get the necessary funding to improve on these facilities, to ensure that even in terms of bad weather, you don't have to bother us to whether there will be, for example, electricity to turn on the various machines and equipment that are being used, you don't have to wonder whether there is water to be used at the various facilities, and all the necessary conveniences that will make the operations at these health centers functional. So these health centers will be converted into smart health facilities, and I can tell you that this is just the beginning towards the continued improvement of our primary care services. If I had to move a little further in terms of the development of our health services, what will become for us, and again, another reality, is the construction of the new Marigot Hospital. Most of you would have heard that a new hospital is planned for Marigot. And Marigot is a very important area for you, the Kalinago Territory, because it's my understanding that half of the population of the Karri Territory, to include Atkinson and Chisela, you obtain your medical services at Marigot. And because of the difficulty that we faced at the old Marigot Hospital, as a result, this is contributing a bit negatively towards the continued provision of care. You know that some of you, for example, would have to be transferred to, as far as Wesley for, for certain health services. So government has realized that that is a challenge for the people of this country, that is a challenge for the people of this section of this country. And because we care about you, the people of this Karri Territory, we care about the people of this country, we will ensure that the construction of this new facility is undertaken. And we have gotten money to the tune of five million US dollars, that is about fifteen thousand EC dollars, that will help us, did I say fifteen thousand? No, fifteen million, but you must tell me, I, PAL rep, no, it's fifteen million, right? Yeah, so we have gotten money to the mil, to the tune of fifty million dollars, which will see us starting the construction of the new Marigot Hospital. And people, we must appreciate these things, because, I mean, we are a little tiny country with a very small economy, and even while we know that there is already a new hospital being built in Roseau at a cost of over forty million US dollars, we are again constructing another hospital in Marigot to the tune of fifteen million EC dollars, that in itself is a significant contribution to the development of our country. I say so because there are some people who are generally on the negative things of life. You listen to them on certain media shows, and on certain media programs, and they tell you, nothing is happening. And as I stand here this evening, I'm happy to be one of those that continue to spread the good information to you, the people of this country, and to you, the people of this territory, to let you know that much is happening in this country, much is happening towards the development of our health services. And these are just a few of the developments that have been taken by way of construction of facilities. I mentioned the smart health facilities, I mentioned the new Marigot Hospital, and the new national hospital. But also, within the Ministry of Health, this is a very large area. We have one, the Ministry of Health, we have the, the, the other unit to do with environment, and within environment, we have a number of sub-units within that unit. For example, we have the Environmental Health Department, we have the DVRP, meaning the Disaster Vulnerable Relief, um, program or department, we also have, um, the Solid Risk Management Corporation, and a number of various units that work within environment. And one of the units that falls within the Ministry of Health and Environment is the Environmental Coordinating Unit. And your PAL rep spoke earlier on with respect to funds that your area have benefited from, under the JEF, meaning the Global Environmental Facility, where you are now seeing, for example, yourselves benefiting from the solar farm, and also fifteen standalone, um, homes which are to be benefiting from the solar program. So this is one of the units within all Ministry of Health and Environment, that has ensured that they obtain the necessary funds to provide for you, the people of the Kalinago Territory, so that they can make you use electricity that is not reliable on diesel and gasoline. And this is the world, that is how we are going, that is how the world is going, my dear people. And when we talk about these developments, let us not make it look like as though, sa-sa-yi, but what is that? Think of presently, most of you who have your house connections, and you have your electricity bill, you have your bill in your hands to wait month end, and then you have to go and pay them like that high electricity bill. And if a couple of days pass and you do not pay it, you cut your lights. So it'll mean that right now, that you're now connected to now solar, you're using the sun to power your house, give you the necessary energy so you can watch your television, and you can enjoy the comfort of your home. So what we are now seeing is that you in the Karri Territory, or Kalinago Territory, benefiting from programs under JEF, and that again, that is within the Ministry of Health and Environment. I'm happy again that not only is the unit, the Environmental Health Department, and also the Environmental Coordinating Unit providing funds, but we also have funds where the people of the Kalinago Territory are going to benefit from funds to improve the road conditions of the Karri people. We're looking at, for example, funds under DVRP that is being funded by the World Bank, and we're looking at developments from Casabres, taking you into the Karri Territory, into Piguah, we're gonna see the rehabilitation of roads, we're gonna see the removal of corves that are bad, where the road has slipped, and we have, we have landslides, we're gonna have this. We're gonna have this facility funded to ensure that we see the continued improvement of these road failures. Furthermore, that program will continue to fund projects also in Honorable Drago's constituency to take us from the Kari, from the Casobus area into Pidu Sufre. Again, 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 this money is coming under the Global Environmental Facility. Let me also tell you, for those of you who drive from Pukaseh at least to Tarishpit, we complain of the road conditions, the potholes and the deplorable conditions of the road. I mean, you know that this road is old, I mean, it's long it has been resurfaced, right? And we are going to see funds being made available under this funding facility to see the complete rehabilitation of road from the Pukaseh Junction to Tarishpit. So things are happening, my dear people. And for those persons who continue to say that nothing is happening in this country, tell them they need to go and buy a good pair of glasses and open their eyes and look and see the developments that continue to take place in this country. Much is happening and I'm talking about just within the Ministry of Health and Environment. A new hospital, forty million dollars, sixteen, fifteen, sixty million dollars, new hospital Marigot. And this facility is somewhere over twenty-five million US dollars, right? I mean, just within the Ministry of Health, we have all this amount of money just being spent on developing areas within the Ministry of Health and Environment. And you the people of this Kalinago Territory are also very lucky, I must say, to have been benefiting from this part of the budget, this part of programs, which are part of the overall development of our country. And I know that time goes quickly, Honorable, you must give me a time checker. I want to mention a few other developments myself have witnessed taking place in this Kari Territory. And I'm talking about the provision of housing. And within the Ministry of Housing, Lands and Water Resource Management, of which I was the Parle sec in my first term, I know I witnessed the handing over of several new homes to you the people of the Kalinago Territory. These are homes that were funded by the Chinese government and the Venezuelan government. And what these houses did, was it to make our lives worse or make it better? No answers? It made our lives better, didn't it? Yes. So my dear people of this territory, I mean, these are the things that this government is doing to continue to improve on the lives and the well-being of our people. And when these forms of investments are made to continue to impact positively on the lives of people, which will eventually impact positively on the health of our people, we have to say thank you to our Prime Minister, we have to say thank you to this government. And we must stand and ensure that those who talk negatively about this country, we must stand up and tell them that they are talking nonsense and that we will continue to support our leader and will continue to support the development of this country. Water systems, they used to be a problem of water shortage in the Kari Territory, wasn't it? There used to be, yes. And one, you know, one thing about this government, we do so many things in this country that people forget fast, they forget it was done. We enjoy the benefits, we enjoy how nice it is, how comfortable it is, and sometimes some people forget quickly and especially by some persons out there who try to give that kind of negative attitude that nothing is being done. Yes, we have seen a positive improvement of water in this constituency. And what has this done, what has it done, is not just opening a tap, but it has made life better for us. It has helped to improve our health conditions, it has ensured that we are no longer at risk towards getting waterborne diseases like typhoid fever, dysentery, cholera, and those kind of diseases that we can be exposed to when we obtain water in poor water sources. So these are some of the goals of this government by ensuring that we make water, portable water, easily accessible to our people. And we are not just looking only in this part of this country, you know, we're looking at the development of our water resources throughout the entire country. And what we have done is that we are nearing our Millennium Development Goals whereby we are close to one hundred percent of ensuring that all our homes in this country have accessible to portable water. In fact, the last few remaining communities in this country that do not yet have access to water, portable water, pipe water, is in the Silvena area. So this is a government that continues to work. I myself can boast of my constituency, for example, in Grandfond. When I came in as Parle sec, nothing was on about water. I remain there, if before has a Parle sec and people complain, 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 no water, and some of the water, all it does is trickle or in terms of bad weather conditions, water dirty. But today, everyone is happy. Everyone can now open their tap and be comfortable and confident that when they open the tap, they're going to get water to flow over their body, enjoy a nice shower. That is what this government is doing to make life better for our people. And my dear people of the Kari Territory, we must applaud these good forms of development because what it has done is that it has made life better. I also want to make mention again of other important interventions that are being done within the government, especially in area of housing. For example, I made mention earlier on of the construction of new houses. We also have seen, for example, the continued provision of assistance of persons in need of housing repairs. And the parliament will tell you that every once in a while, people complain that, Parle sec, my house leaking, I mean, the house was just leaking, what form of assistance can we get to help us to improve on the leaks that we have or even the windows that are broken? And that is what this, this area of development is doing. What it does basically is to ensure that we assist persons who are in need of some of the basic housing repairs. And there are some critics out there who talk about who is handout and is hat, but don't bother about that. Because I have had one-to-one conversations with elderly people. And you know, they tell me, Parle sec, look, the house is leaking, it's only myself alone in the room. Parle sec, I did not sleep last night. Look, come and see the bed, I had to shift it there, shift it across, shift it, madisadomi. And thanks to this government, with a great leader, the Honorable Russell Scarry, he has been able to design a program that can help to eliminate this kind of problems that some of our elderly people will have. And are we telling our people that we should go for loans? You mean to tell me at eight sixty, when you're going to have retired, having have labored hard in this country, are you telling me at the eight of cent, you're gonna send people to the credit unions and the banks to get a loan of eight thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars to make very little security to purchase materials, pay for labor, transportation, to do the repairs to the homes? Just think about it, my dear people. And these are the good things that this government is doing for our people. The area of washrooms, I can recall when the PM made mention of eliminating pit latrines. There was a song about Scarry billing, what was it? Toilet, right? And some people laughed and dejected, it's almost like the tablets that were made available to the schoolchildren. And the good thing about this government is that everything that our leader talks about and promises, he makes it available to the people. And that is the good thing that we have to talk about leadership in this country. So what we are now seeing is a program that is aimed to eliminate pit latrines by December two thousand and seventeen. And it is not just taking rid of pit latrines, you know, or getting rid of them, you know, and building flush toilets. It's about the end result, my people. It's about the comfort that we now enjoy. It's about the convenience for elderly people. These are the benefits of these programs. And no government in my lifetime, I'm not too old, I'm not too young, but I have never in my lifetime seen any programs that are reaching out to people, vulnerable people, elderly people, single parents, unemployed people, I've never seen programs that are really reaching out to people. And because these programs are aimed to benefit our people and to make life better, I want to tell you the people of the Kalinago Territory that we must continue to support a government that continues to care for you. I know that much development has taken place in the Kalinago Territory. I mean, there's much to be said, the parliament have given you just a little report of what he has been doing. I can see Honorable Ashton and Kelly, they could also go and give big reports of what has been done already in the Kari Territory. Millions of dollars have been spent in the Kari Territory. And it's just about, not just about spending money, but it's spending money for the overall development of the people of the Kalinago Territory. I think I will pause for now, I'm going beyond my term. And I just want to thank you, the people of the Kalinago Territory, for supporting the Labour Party government. I want to thank you for supporting your Parle sec and ensure that every forms of development that has been undertaken in this territory, that you give the full support and cooperation to ensure the continued development of your people. Thank you for listening.
It's my pleasure today to update you on tourism. I bring the greetings from the constituency of Roseau Central and I want to remind all of you here today and also all of you who are listening to my voice to ensure that you come to Roseau on the first of May to witness the opening of the new, of your new West Bridge. So we look forward to you coming in large numbers to Roseau on May the first to witness the opening of your new bridge. On my drive here, I really want to say congratulations to those responsible and especially those in the NEP program for ensuring that you have a really beautiful experience in terms of the way the sides of the roads are kept and also the plants that have been planted along the side of the road. It really makes the drive a lot more comforting and makes it a much better experience, especially when I was passing through the Hosbach Ridge. And one of the things that we plan to do is to actually have a competition whereby the villages can register and we'll come at some point and review the villages to see who has the cleanest village, very importantly, and also the most beautiful village. And coming out of that, persons would, the community would get some form of assistance to further help make it more beautiful, but more importantly, you'll have the rights to brag and say that for twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, the village or the area of whatever constituency has the most beautiful or the cleanest village. So the government of Dominica continues to create the environment for each and every one of you to succeed. And firstly, we do that by ensuring that you have a proper and solid education because a solid education is the only way to move forward. Many of us can do certain things, but if you have, if you're street smart and if you're also properly educated, you can well imagine how far you can go. And the government continues to provide educational support to all our kids by providing them with schoolbooks assistance, with uniform assistance, transportation assistance, even down to the state college. Before, many persons were not able to attend the state college. And today, over ninety-five percent of persons are available, are able to go to the state college because you have more space. Back in the day, there was no space available, so many persons who were very smart and who wanted to go to the state college could not go to the state college because there was no space available for them there. The government is a caring government and continues to provide much support in terms of the yes we care program as our minister mentioned a while ago. Hospital fees, persons over seventy don't pay hospital fees, persons under eighteen also don't pay hospital fees. So again, it really shows that the government of Dominica cares about its people and puts things in place in order to allow them to move forward. Recently, you would have heard about the National Health Insurance Program, which is a pilot program, again geared to assisting mothers with their children to ensure that those who need the financial help can have financial help because many times persons are sick, persons have lots of bills to pay, bills are very expensive nowadays, sometimes you have three or four children, I have quite a bit of children, but luckily I have things in place to take care of, but not everybody is as fortunate. And we have to put things in place for those who are unable to take care of themselves to help them. Sometimes fathers don't play their role and therefore everything is left on the backs of the mother. So the government continues to provide social services to help our people. Honorable Cassius also spoke of this small business assistance. This is very important because again, if you have a solid education, a solid foundation, then you want to go into business to further yourself and to help create employment, to create revenue for yourself. The small business program is also a great way to allow you to start your own business or to improve on your own business. They provide you with grants up to fifteen thousand dollars and you don't have to pay it back. But very importantly, we want to ensure that you use it for the right reason. You want to know that when you give that person that start, that help, that strength, it will allow them to go to the next level. You don't want someone to just use that money wisely and within a matter of two, three months, they're coming back for more money. So you have to make sure you go through the programs, learn how to use your money, learn how to save money and to ensure how you can expand on your business so that you can be self-reliant and eventually you can hire persons to work for you. And that's what it's all about. If we can create, if we can create an environment where persons can take care of themselves and their families, this is all what we're trying to do. So those of you who have signed up for the small business programs, make sure you go through the trading programs and ensure that you use the money wisely so that you can push yourself further forward. And tourism is also a perfect avenue. There are so many ways that you can use the small business to create restaurants, a small bar, craft shops, hair breeders, bus drivers, tour guides, a small bakery, the provision of cassava bread, even providing coconut water stalls. Many times persons are moving around and remember, people are coming to Dominica to experience what we have to offer. They're not coming to Dominica to eat macaroni and cheese, they're not coming to Dominica to eat french fries, they come to taste our cassava bread, they come to taste our coconut cheese and tablet, they want to drink our coconut, our coconut water. So even just having a coconut stall on the side of the road provides you the opportunity to create revenue for themselves, having pretty stalls. Because think of it this way, if you see a pretty stall and you see a ugly stall, which one are you gonna stop at? The pretty stall. So the experience and the way you present yourself is also very important. So the person who has the best presentation, more than likely is going to get all of the business. So there are many, many things that you can do. And again, we have tablets, our kids, our children have tablets, let us use those tablets. And when I'm talking about tabs, I'm not talking about the coconut tablet, I'm talking about these type of tablets. Let us use them to our advantage so that we can research on what little businesses I can do. Because nowadays, anything you can think of is on the internet and you can research and get more information. So let us use it for the positive, let us not use it to mark people's business or to say negative things on Facebook or to post negative stories on Facebook. What we have to be doing is really pushing up ourselves and also lifting up other people and at the same time lifting up our country. Who else is gonna do it for us except ourselves? So tourism is one of the important, what I say, economic drivers in Dominica and also the entire world. When persons come to Dominica, they come to have a fantastic time, they come to experience what we have to offer. But obviously, they must get to where they want to go to, so they have to go on a taxi, which means the taxi man is making some money. They have to go to, they have to must pass through the airport, it means they have to pay fees in the airport. They must go to a hotel, they must sleep. They don't necessarily have to go to a hotel, they can also go to a guest house. And even here in the Kalinago Territory, you have something called the homestay. So persons can also want to, persons who want to experience what life is in the Kalinago Territory can also come into Kalinago Territory and stay in your home and therefore you're also making money as a result of that. One of the, one of the objectives in the manifesto of the Dominican Labour Party was to ensure that there was a free bedroom, a free star hotel in the Kalinago Territory. And today, you have that free star hotel in the Kalinago Territory by the name of Ayawasi. So Mr. Patrick Hill has that facility where again, by having that facility, you must have persons work inside of there. When a person works inside of there, it means he can provide for his family, okay? Mr. Hill must buy fruits and vegetables from someone in the community, which means other persons are benefiting from it. So we always say that tourism is everybody's business, even if it doesn't directly touch you, in some way, shape or form, it will touch you. If a visitor comes to the place, they want to go on a tour, how are they going to go on the tour? They have to take a bus, they have to rent a thing, they have to use a tour guide. When they go to Les Calatéche, they can get a tour guide to walk down to the area so that they're safe, okay? And that means persons can gain revenue as a result of these things. So tourism provides many jobs in Dominica, over four thousand jobs are created directly as a result of tourism. And indirectly, over eleven thousand... And indirectly, over eleven thousand jobs are created. So take for example, someone who comes to Dominica and stays even at your home, you pay lights, correct? You pay water. So it means all the persons that are employed in these other areas are technically and benefiting as a result of tourism. Even the government benefits from it because of the hotels, the restaurants, they play VAT, they pay taxes. So eventually, the government also benefits as a result of that. And these funds that are the funds that the government uses to run the country and to create some of these social programs. But again, not all of that can be done. So therefore, we also use the Citizen by Investment program to help to fund this program that Honourable Cassius Darrow has spoken about. Again, many people make it a point of duty to pass through the Kalanago Territory. It's a beautiful area. And again, it's an, again, it's opportunity for you to try and capitalize on persons passing through the Kalanago Territory, to stop and take part in something so that they can spend money and therefore you benefit from it. They're interested in your culture, very importantly, your way of life, especially your beautiful arts and craft and your baskets. I mean, you see those baskets all over the world. Whenever I travel to the, to the States where I go to some of the conferences, there's a lady that tells me every time I must, every time I go there, I must bring one of your beautiful baskets for her. So again, all of these things are opportunities and we have to work to ensure that we make them at the right size, at the right price, because sometimes if you build a basket that's way too big, it can't go in your suitcase. So again, we have to be careful as to what size you build. And again, that's where the Ministry of Tourism can also provide training and can also provide direction. It is one of the best products to help you with and to move further. You also have a couple of sites. You have the horseback ridge, you have Les Calatéche, you also have the Centipede Trail. And again, that is where the Ministry of Tourism can also help you. We have something called the Community Tourism Department where our role is to ensure that when persons come to Dominica, the various communities also benefit from tourism. Because if you don't benefit from tourism, then you have nothing to worry about. Okay, you don't want to care about the individual coming there. So we try to work with various communities to enhance certain things. So take for example, Les Calatéche, I think the office, we've provided them with financial support for the equipment. So if you have other sites, and I've heard of other sites in this area that you may want to develop, all you need to do is to come to the Ministry of Tourism and we will do our best to work with you to help to create additional sites for persons when they come to Dominica. Because sometimes we will come back to Dominica many times. And obviously, if I come to Dominica three times, I don't want to go to the same site over and over and over again. So we, so over a period of time, we must create additional sites for our visitors to go to. And not only visitors, we also have local tourists. You know, so we also have to cater to the locals also, because normally you have a season and you also want persons to come throughout the entire year. You don't want persons coming just for one short period and in the next couple of months, there's no business. So you have to ensure that you can attract as many people to Dominica, both local and the foreigners. In terms of tourism, we see there are basically four pillars, four main things in terms of tourism. One is to make persons aware of Dominica. Two is to make, is to market the country. The third one is to get people to Dominica and the fourth one is the experience. To me, one of the most important ones is the experience. When people come to Dominica, they want to have a fantastic time. And you know, like any old story, if you give persons a bad experience, if you give them bad service, they normally tell a lot more people as opposed to when you give them good service. So many of you may go to a company in Roseau or anywhere and they give you great service. You may only tell one person. But the day they give you bad service, how many people do you tell? Quite a few. And with the advent of social media and the internet, we tell so much more people by making one post on the internet. So when individuals come to our areas, we have to ensure that we give them the best customer service at all times. And customer service has to be consistent, because you don't want to go to a food place on Monday and the food tastes great. And when you go back on Tuesday, it doesn't taste great anymore. You want to go there over and over because the food is consistently great. So proper and good customer service is very important. So the Ministry of Tourism, we try to, we do our best to make persons aware of Dominica. Many times, people have a misunderstanding as to which is Dominica and which is Dominican Republic. So a lot of work is being done to ensure that we can differentiate Dominica from the Dominican Republic so persons know where to come. So even recently, you'd have seen on television on the name of that program, obviously, The Price is Right, you'd have seen Dominica being featured. So again, there are a lot of things that we're doing to ensure people know of Dominica. Then the second part is that we begin to market the country, because if you have a store and you just build your store, are people going to come to your store? You must tell them why they should come to your store. And as I said about the whole branding part of it, you must do things to make them want to come to Dominica. So through the Ministry of Tourism, we have a department called Discover Dominica Authority and their role is to market the country. Put ads out in Canada, put ads out in Northam, in the USA, put ads out in England, put ads out in Europe, put ads out in the Fresh Western, because we know a lot of the people from the Fresh Westernies love to come to Dominica and also especially the Kalanago Territory, especially during summer. We have droves of them coming here to ensure that they enjoy what we have to offer. So what the government has done too is to also increase our marketing budget so that we can put more adverts out there to attract more people to Dominica. The more persons who come to Dominica, the more persons have a great time in Dominica, means more money will stay in Dominica. In terms of access, persons can come to Dominica too easily. They can either fly or they can use a boat. So we know with Liat, sometimes they're late, sometimes people stay lost in between train and Antigua. You know, but they are doing their best to try and improve on the service and the government of Dominica continues to give them support. Many people say, let us just cut off Liat. But just imagine if you cut off Liat and you had no other person to get you to Dominica. Imagine the chaos that there would be. So even for the Ministry of Tourism, we also have what we call an air access committee whose job is to speak with all the different airlines to try and get as many airlines coming to Dominica to provide a regular, reliable service. Persons can also come to Dominica by sea and you have the cruise ships, you have the ferry and you also have the yachts. So we are also doing a lot of work to ensure that the more yachts will come to Dominica. And we've been very successful, especially this year. We had something called the Yachty Appreciation Week. Every year, we have an event where we welcome persons to come to Dominica. We've been doing a lot more. We also have PES, which is Portsmouth Association of Yachts and Security Services, who provides an excellent service to the yachties. So before, when yachties were scared to come to Dominica, now they want to make it a point of duty to come to Dominica because the guys go out, they bring them in, they bring water for them, or they sell them water. The guys even have a hose from shore out into the sea so that the yachts can come and get water. Obviously, the person who does that makes money as a result of that. Persons bring them fruits and vegetables, they make money from that. They come on shore. Even the moorings, when they tie the boats out in the water, you have to pay to do that. So again, the community benefits as a result of that. This year, we had over, over one hundred yachts in the harbor of Portsmouth. Many persons said at night, it looked like there were stars very low, but it wasn't actually stars. It was actually the mass of the yachts that's going backwards and forward. And the great thing about it is that the persons who come on yachts, they spend a lot more money in Dominica and they spend a lot more time. So if I had to compare a yachtie on the small yachts as compared to a cruise visitor, a cruise visitor comes here for a few hours in a day and they spend about sixty-six US, whereas a yachtie will stay for seven days and they will spend over a hundred US every day. So if we can attract more of these individuals to come to Dominica, it means more money stays in Dominica for the economy and for all of us to benefit. So even the yachties who come to Portsmouth, they come here. They come here in the Kalanago Territory to see what you have to offer, to see a way of life. So therefore, you still benefit as a result of it. We also work with the ferry to ensure that they have provided us a reliable service. And we're also trying to see how we can improve and increase the number of visits to Dominica so that you can go out on any day that you wish, because the easier it is for you to get to a country, it means more likely more people will want to come to the country. The last part really is the experience, which I mentioned before. People have to get a great experience. So one of the things that we do, we try to train as many individuals as possible. So we've been training the immigration officer, which is the first person that you meet. And you want the immigration officer to give you a good welcome. Because if you go, if you come to a country and the first person you meet gives you that booey face and gives you a hard time, you already ruin the person's experience. But imagine you come to a country and the person says, good morning, how are you? Welcome to Dominica. You know, how are you? How are you doing? How are you staying for? They fill out your form very quickly and you're going away. And then the next person who is who? The next person is the port officer, who's going to check your bag. You know, so we all have to provide excellent service. When you step outside, you have the bus driver. You want to make sure he's properly dressed. You don't want him in a dirty shirt. You know, you want him to drive in a comfortable way. You don't want him racing down the road with you, you know? If something is wrong, you don't want him stopping on the side of the road or going in the bush and doing something and come back inside of the bus. You know, so we have to ensure that we provide excellent service. So we've been doing a lot of training through the Discover Dominica Authority to make sure that as many people are trained so that they can provide the best possible service. We train the tour guides, we train the hair breeders, the vendors, let's name it, taxi drivers. We provide training to as many of them as possible so that when people come to Dominica, they have a great experience. Because as I said, bad experience means many negative stories, good experience means one or two good stories. So we have to ensure that all of us, even when we're not in the tourism business, when a person passes, like we always do, hi, good morning, how are you? You know, people always comment and say these are some of the things that they like about coming to Dominica. The people are so friendly. But again, we have to be careful because sometimes competition is a funny thing. Sometimes on the beachfront, you see one bus driver talking to some tourists, you know, I can take you to the beautiful Emerald Pool with lush green forest, beautiful water. And then at the back of him is another bus driver saying, I can do it for five dollars. Now, after you've done all of that hard work trying to convince somebody, someone at the back of you saying that, imagine what's going to happen. The two of them start to make noise. The visitor is seeing all of that commotion and saying to themselves, oh my God, is it safe to go with these guys? You know, so we have to ensure that we provide the best possible service and the government of Dominica cannot do it by themselves. The Ministry of Tourism cannot do it by themselves. All of us have to work together to ensure that as a group, as a community, we give the best possible service so that persons will want to come here, they want to come back to Dominica. They will tell people of the great service and the great friendly people that we have in Dominica. And again, all of us would benefit from the tourism in one way or the other. So you either get a job, your friend or your family gets a job, or the government gets some revenue as a result of that. And that again helps to create jobs in the communities. But in addition to that, the Ministry of Tourism also has a lot of work to do. So many of the other sites around Dominica, we provide support to ensure that they are in a good condition. So Emerald Pool, we've been doing work there. Trafalgar Falls, we've been doing work there. Titu Guaj, we've been doing work there. So many, many sites. Miro, we've provided them with support, financial support to make sure the beaches are intact. And if you go to Miro nowadays on a cruise ship day, you'd be surprised to see the amount of people who come to Miro as a result of that. But again, what happens is that the people of Miro understand and because they're benefiting from it, they provide an excellent service to the guests. So the guests want to go to Miro because it's a great experience for them. We provided support in St. Joseph. Even in Salisbury, we provided the beach community with chairs, when the persons, chairs and umbrellas. So when persons come to the beach, they can provide them with a tour and provide them with a great experience. So we can do the same thing in the Kalanago Territory. So what has to be done is that you have to create what we call a community tourism group. You come together, you come up with different ideas, you come to us and we will do our best to assist you in seeing how we can make things work better for you in the Kalanago Territory. So I'm not going to be too long. This is basically going to be my presentation. So what I'm saying to you is that the government of Dominica is more than willing and happy to continue working for you on your behalf and for your benefit. And if you have any ideas, if you have any concerns, please feel free to ask today or even come to the Ministry of Tourism and we will be more than willing and happy to work with you through your.